Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Jamestown Public School Board to order. It is Monday, December 16th, 2024 at 5:30 PM in the Thompson Community Room. Please note that we had our new board member orientation this evening at 4:30 PM in the District Office Conference Room. I'd like to recognize all those in the audience tonight and thank you for coming. We look forward to our upcoming awards. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on in our agenda, does the board have any conflicts of interest? Please note that I completed a conflict of interest for any business development with University of Jamestown, I work for the university. Any other conflicts of interest? Jacob?
I'll say, yeah, one of the upcoming extended contract votes my wife is part of, so.
And Melissa? University conflict, yep, okay. Any other conflicts of interest? Any other conflicts of interest? If not, moving on. Melissa, would you read the school board norms?
The board developed norms are to share and respect opinions and speak with a unified voice once a decision has been reached. Execute all duties of the school board in compliance with North Dakota Sentry Code. Properly prepare for meetings and commit to assessing board effectiveness and ensure high-quality governance for all stakeholders.
Thank you, Melissa. We have no public communication. Moving on to our consent agenda, is there a motion? Or would anyone like anything removed from the consent agenda? At any time, we can have something removed or questions answered. If not, just a motion by Erin?
Second.
A second by Jason, we have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to our regular meeting, we have our recognition tonight and Jamie, if you would read the names and then athletes and coaches, as your names are called, please just walk over here and I have a little, the school board has an item for you and then we'll have you stand behind here for a photo of everybody. So just kind of line up on the steps.
The 2024 Fall Athletic Recognitions are for Boys Soccer, the 2024 WDA Team Champions, undefeated conference season 16-0, finished the year 18-1. 2024 State Tournament Third Place, Brady Hardy, All-Conference, All-State, All-State Tournament Team. Edie Rahmahdi, All-Conference, All-State, All-State Tournament Team. Grant Lundey, All-Conference. Gabe Jennison, All-Conference Valley City. Ian Lear, All-Conference. WDA and State Coach of the Year, Brandy Hardy. For Boys Tennis, we have Luke LeFaire, All-Conference, All-State. Braxton Burkett, All-Conference. Football, Kellen Harstead, All-Conference, Second Team, All-State. Jackson Jarrett, All-Conference. Max Rittenbach, All-Conference, First Team, All-State. Von Romstall, All-Conference, First Team, All-State. Caleb Shealy, All-Conference, Second Team, All-State. Cody Burrath, Honorable Mention, All-Conference. Lea Frey, Honorable Mention, All-Conference. For Girls Swim and Dive, Julia Scari, All-Conference. And Georgia Littenmayr, All-Conference from Litchfield. Volleyball, Leah Trombauer, All-Conference. Eddie Hagerley, All-Conference, All-State. And Lucy Falk, All-State Tournament Team.
Congratulations again to all our fall athletes. Under Correspondings, we have, thank you for remembrance of, from the family of Dr. Leck and the passing of his father, the family of Jane Kamelance and the family of Frank Fisher. Under Reports, Student Council Report, do we have, oh, we have somebody here, great.
Hi, I'm Hattie McDonald, the Executive President of Student Council at JHS. We most recently went to the Student Council Convention in Bismarck last week where we learned valuable lessons on what it means to be leader and how to be a good one. Coming up, we will be having a meeting during Christmas break where we will be discussing snowball and adding our final thoughts and ideas regarding that. I will provide you with more details about snowball at the next school board meeting. Thank you for your time today. Do you have any more questions?
Thank you so much for coming. Does the board have any questions? Thank you, and we look forward to your next report. Thank you so much. Under D, we have Progress Monitoring Report, Strategic Focus 1, Cultural Learning Goal 2.
Thank you, you have the Progress Monitoring Report. I'm going to go through a few of these slides to get you up to speed to where we are at from a progress monitoring standpoint, and Cultural Learning Goal 2. Just a reminder, and this is located on Slide 3. Yeah, if you want to turn that on and I'll talk and add this in. Just looking at Slide 3 for the board, just a reminder, we had a goal that we aligned to our vital survey, trying to analyze areas of care and support, time management, and voice and decision-making, and we set a goal of, on that scale, on that seven-point scale that we wanted to be at a 5.0 in all of those, in those three categorical areas. So care and support, time management, voice and decision-making, at a five or above. There we go, okay. So as an executive summary, I'll just show you, this is what we will be talking mostly about. So our current status, we took our survey in October 24 and compared that to our baseline survey in December 23. From a finding standpoint, we saw that we are right there, shade short in our time management, but moving the needle in each of those areas, which I'm really very proud of. But, you know, again, looking at that 5.0 target in care and support and in voice and decision-making, above that level, and then shade below in time management. So for us, the next level steps, or the next steps for us, our building-level teams meet because our district data all flows up from building levels. So our building levels take teams and they look to their specific goals, create building-level goals to help move that needle in each of, in each of these categories, and then we do that as a district-level team as well. So we are, one area for a next step to consider moving forward, vital added, they did some shifting around, but they added a category called Educator Well-being, and if they have included that data, I think it's important that in our next annual revision, iteration of our strategic plan, that we include that as a 5.00 goal as well moving forward. But we'll continue to gather data on that in April because that will be our next check-in. So if you look, here's that sense of, at least an optic of what I was just talking about, moving the needle in each of those areas. Time management, not as much. We haven't moved that one as much as others. We spent an awful lot of time in voice and decision-making and talking about specific areas in each, in that, and you can see that the largest gain was made in that area as well. Care and support was already above that threshold, but still making gains, which I'm really happy with. And you might ask the question, well, how does that compare? What do these numbers mean outside of just comparing us to move, you know, what's a good score? And so vital gathered some data for us too, and you can see that comparison in each of those areas we're either at already or we are above what is, has been collected by 3,600 staff, 80 schools. So I'm just going to drop back here so you can see those, you know, those areas and then what the state averages are from those in the vital network. So overall, again, I think that's something to celebrate. We have a lot of work to do. There's certainly things that we can do better and there are celebrations where we've done really well, but we want to make sure that we continue to live in that world of continuous improvement. So at a district level, a lot of the focus here for us has been on onboarding, and, you know, we had very, very clear strengths in this area about collaboration, positive environment, strong relationships with colleagues and administrators, support from all. There were opportunities to improve that, those two primary areas are on onboarding, but also support from families. I detailed in the October 24 update that we're seeing an increase in, in each of the seven indicators, but we still want to see a greater increase in educators are respected in the community, that's an area of deficit that we want to continue to do more in. And I will say, I wish that I could bottle, we had onboarding for an hour earlier and we had our instructional coaches talking about SBL. You're going to hear from teacher leaders in our, in our district in a little bit, and board education. I wish we could bottle that because I was blown away, absolutely blown away by the discussion that our coaches were having around SBL, and I'm sure I'll be equally impressed with the teachers that come and share with you as, as board members and with the community on SBL, and I wish we could bottle that because the more time we spend seeing the work that our teachers do, that will continue to increase. And I think the strategies around how can we get our, our families and our community inside our schools, not just bringing people out, not bringing, just bringing our students out to other places, but how do we bring our community members in and see the work of the school? That's when you really, I think, will see that needle move. With time management, we still saw an increase, but it wasn't to the same degree. Some of the challenges we saw were specifically in resource allocation and prep equity between our elementary levels and our secondary levels. We have moved the bar on that with, with some, some of the action when we increased our opportunities for collaboration and prep time for our elementary teachers. That helped to even out that equity a little bit. We still see challenges and expectations outside of contracted time, it's still an area of concern that is being recognized and also the recognition of workload burdens for our staff. So some of the actions that have taken place, we revamped our curriculum selection process. A lot of that initial scoring in December 23 did have to relate to our ELA curriculum, which has since been purchased and we're along the lines of implementation now. That updated elementary schedule to build in more collaboration time, and then the types of meetings we were having in buildings and the frequency of those meetings. So six of those seven indicators moved from the baseline, the only one that, that didn't maintain the same rating. So it didn't go backwards, it just stayed the same. The, one of the things specifically related to professional development, which is probably the area here that we are going to see the most amount of growth or the potential for the most amount of growth, I think Mr. Gaylor's done a wonderful job in reinstituting our Professional Development Committee, and we've had great conversations in that committee related to what our professional learning needs are. We've had talks about how we can be more flexible, more purposeful, and more relevant with professional development for our teachers, and he's also conducted empathic interviews, which I think is a great opportunity for more individualized discussion and, and learning about what's happening from the perspective of our teachers. And so how can we improve professional development? The area that was our lowest, it's now in our middle, related to voice and decision-making. Our opportunities to improve were really in overall communication and then the ability to understand or influence major district-level decisions. So we changed a few things, these I've talked about before, an application process for district committees as opposed to simple assignments, hey, would you do this? It's just selections, now we have an application process. The charters, which we've talked about, virtual office hours, which we've talked about, our Professional Development Committee. We saw growth in each of the eight indicators. And our opportunities to improve, while I think the virtual office hours have been good, having a concerted effort where we're, where those of us in central office administration are more, are available in the buildings as opposed to just a virtual option, I think we need to find a way to have more face-to-face time in buildings that allow for more one-on-one opportunities and learning, very similar to what Mr. Gaylor was talking about with, or has been doing with empathic interviews specifically to professional development. But I think virtual office hours were nice, but I think we need to do more to be in the buildings and connect face-to-face instead. So with that, I would stand for questions, and there is your recommended motion.
Any questions from the board on the report? If not, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Melissa? A second by Jamie, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? Any discussion? If not, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion approved, and thank you for showing us the progress in just in one year's timeline. So thank you. Moving on, under Board Education, we have Standard-Based Learning in Action. Jamestown Public School Teachers, please come forward and, and Mr., Mr. Gaylor.
I'm just getting their presentation ready. Don't worry, you don't have to hear from me again. So, but as I'm pulling this up, I just asked them to all introduce themselves and the school and grade level that they represent, and then this was a collaborative presentation that kind of came together in the last couple of weeks, and so there's a lot of detail in the presentation. I don't think they're going to spend time reading the slides to you, but as you have questions that you think of, please be sure that you make note of that and ask those questions as well. Tremendous team of teachers in front of you and a lot of hard work, so you don't know the countless hours and years really that our elementary staff have spent preparing for this, and we're really starting to see the fruits of some of that front-end work, and so I'm excited to have them share with you.
Hi, I'm Nancy Anderson, I teach 5th grade at Washington. Mr. Gaylor had given us a couple of questions. I don't, are you, am I doing this, this or this? Okay, he had given us a couple of questions, and then we were to answer on the ones that were most relevant to us, and I had four points that I wanted to touch on. One of them is the, how has the use of proficiency scales and standards influenced instructional practices? It's changed the way that I teach math. I used to, I have an hour for math every single day. I used to get up in front of the room and I would, it kind of felt maybe just a little bit chaotic because I would teach one lesson and some of the kids would get it right away and other kids maybe didn't get it at all. Now I still have an hour for math, but I'm only running small groups, so I split my block into 20 minutes, and I teach the same lesson, but I teach it three times. When the students are coming to me, I'm able to zone in on what specific instruction that they need, and so I'm focusing on the standard and they're receiving instruction at their level, so then in this way I'm meeting the needs of every single student. I still cover my entire curriculum, but my focus is on the priority standards. Another question that I wanted to touch on is how have you observed students' growth and understanding of the standards, and also how has the students responded to feedback based on the standards as opposed to traditional grading? And it used to be that I would tell my students what grade they received, and oftentimes either they didn't care or they didn't really understand. Sometimes it felt like maybe their parents cared more than they did. Now students are taking ownership for their learning, so everyone knows the standard that we're working on and most can tell me how well they understand the concept. And so it's been encouraging to see students maybe stepping up and understanding more than I anticipated them to. Are there areas where we need to have additional focus or refinement? Yes. Our grading platform is new and it's tricky, it's challenging, it's new to learn, and then how we're reporting out to students and to parents is, it's been a challenge for us. We'll get there, but there's definitely been a learning curve. And then the last one is what are the biggest successes that you've experienced so far? I have been part of a lot of meaningful SBL conversations with other teachers across the district, and it's encouraging to see staff embracing this change because every time we do something new, it is, sometimes you get some pushback, but we've had a lot of people that have had a lot of deep, rich, meaningful conversations. I've also noticed a shift in the way that my students approach their learning, so it's a lot more purposeful and meaningful.
I'm Kelly Bauer, and I teach 1st grade at Gustner, and I'm just going to kind of walk through this presentation that I think you guys got ahead of time. There's a lot of words on here, so I'm not going to read everything. Hopefully you had a chance to look at it, but, so we'll kind of zip through it and then if you guys have questions, but, and if you guys want to jump in at any point, just, just jump in. Do you want to introduce yourselves? Yeah?
I'm Pam Schmidberg, and I teach K5 Fayed at Gustner.
I'm Allison Olson, and I teach 1st grade at Gustner. Okay, so I'll just go through this. So the first question here, how have your collaborative conversations about student learning changed? And just, I'm going to read the main bullet points here. Our PLCs are focused on data and student outcomes, and we have a goal for our PLCs, our grade-level meetings, and that goal is to improve student data, and we have data now that we can talk about. There's increased collaboration and sharing of best practices because we're all working toward the same goal, using the same tools to get there. There's focus on differentiation and individual needs because we can see exactly where all of our students are, even if we're not all in the same classroom or even in the same building, we can look at a common assessment and say, hey, here's our Level 2 kids, how can we work together as a 1st grade team, even if I'm at Gustner and someone's at Louis Lamore, we can work together to try to get the kiddo from a 2 to a 3 and share strategies. And then reflection on continuous improvement, always, like how can we get more kids at a Level 3 or more kids at a Level 4? How has the use of proficiency scales and standards influenced instructional planning or student grouping? Basically, the grouping is there now because we can see, like I just said, across schools, grade levels, we can see, okay, these are Level 2 kids, these are Level 3 kids. Another really exciting thing is that now we've established this group of Level 4 kids, which are those kids that are above and beyond what our goals are, and we can work as a team to figure out like how, what are our goals for those kids that have already reached proficiency and a standard, and how can we make them improve even further? How have you observed students' growth and understanding of the standards? There's increased engagement and participation because the kids know what their goals are, right? We always work better when we know what an end outcome is supposed to be. There is a lot of student reflection and self-assessment, hey, I'm at a 2, I know I need to be here to get to a Level 3, how can I get there? And there's an increased confidence because when kids know what they are supposed to learn, they don't feel lost, just like all of us. If we know what our goals are, we are more confident in moving forward. How have students responded to receiving feedback? There's increased clarity and understanding because they know exactly, actually, I'm better at giving feedback because I, as the teacher, there's a lot of clarity in what their goals are, so I can really, and we've worked together as grade levels to make So, I can really, and we've worked together as grade levels to make scales into student-friendly. Language, so the goals are easy for kids to understand. So, that feedback is kind of just embedded in instruction now. There's enhanced motivation, improved growth mindset, always working to go to the next level. And greater engagement and revision. So, if a kid needs to go redo something, they understand kind of the why behind it. I'm gonna kind of skip that. We talked about parent feedback. Nancy, you did a great job on touching on some of the things that, the progress reports. Next steps, we, we're learning that as we're really implementing this year, we're finding things like, oh, we thought this was going to be great. In practice, we need to tweak it, right? That's always going to happen. It looks good on paper, but now when we're doing it, we need to change some things. And then, I think we would all agree that vertical alignment needs to happen now. We've really focused on what can we do within our grade level? What goals do we have within our grade level? But now, we need to look at, you know, looking vertically, meaning I might need to talk to 2nd grade teachers and see how can we work together over the long term for these kiddos? Oh, there's more. Do you want to jump in here, anybody? They're listening to me talk. Okay. Shift, how has the shift to standard-based learning changed your instructional assessment? Basically, common assessments, meaning I am assessing my students the same way Allison is assessing her students, the same way a teacher at Roosevelt is assessing their students. And we can come together and look at scores and talk about how student outcome, what our student outcomes are. Maybe trends, like why are we scoring low in this area? I might be able to say, hey, I'm scoring low here, you're scoring high here, let's work together, help me understand what you're doing that maybe I'm not doing. I think that's been the biggest change in assessments. And, yeah, any questions that any of us can answer?
Jason?
Two, two questions. The first one, I was glad you mentioned the rating of 4 now. And this might be a question for, for Mr. Gaylor too, but, you know, we no longer have our Talented and Gifted program. Is that what we see Level 4 kind of becoming now, or am I mixing those?
I'm gonna jump in and say, I, the Talented and Gifted program, you know, you had to qualify to get in and only a certain, you know, group of kids went in, whether they were high in one area, low in another, kind of. I love this because it gives me an opportunity. I might have a kid that like really excels in one area and now I know, hey, here is something above and beyond that you can do that's maybe more creative and collaborative, right, beyond the, the just bare minimum. But that kid maybe isn't your typical high flyer that would have qualified for TAG. So, it's kind of nice that it can be super individualized like that. Maybe you can jump in because you did TAG.
Yeah, I, as a former TAG teacher, I, I feel like I am using a lot of those same strategies with my upper-level kiddos. And as a matter of fact, I am doing a little bit of TAG work with a couple of the, not TAG work, but same idea with some of my students. And, but it is nice, as Kelly said, because it's not just those kids. It's not limited to the ones that would have qualified, but it is the same idea.
Go ahead, Jason.
What kind of learning curve has there been for parents? How about some feedback on maybe the first conferences using this? Or are we gauging that as a, as a district yet, or any feedback?
At our meeting today, we talked about that. Because the parents with this new scale, it is a learning curve because they see, they might see a 2 and think their kid is failing. Where actually, if we set their goal for that particular standard to start out at a 2, the kid is actually on pace of where they need to be. So, it is a learning curve for the parents to realize that at the start of the year, their child might be at a 2, but they're still where they need to be. And by the end of the year, our goal would be to have everybody at that 3 or above level. So, it has been a little learning curve for those parents as well.
Aaron?
So, yeah, I know, not personally, but adjacent personally, how much work and effort has gone into this and developing the criteria and the challenges there, just with all the background work that not everybody has seen. And I think it's really great with, I'm all, I'm all on board on this, and I think it's a really good change to the, to the curriculum and how we're rating not only ourselves, but the kids and then hopefully the parents get to benefit from this as well. You did mention challenges with communication and just, could you just expand on that? And what kind of things are you looking at doing to try to overcome those challenges? Yeah, you mentioned it, yeah.
The challenge, the challenges that I were referring to was the grading platform itself. It's just a very different and complicated system than we've ever used before. So, as we're reporting out, we have a lot of different options for how we can report out to the parents, how the students are learning and what level they're learning at. And so, we have just had to decide where we want, what makes sense for us and how we want to communicate that to parents.
Is it, is it a deal where you can provide them with too much detail and overwhelm?
Yes.
And then, so it's finding that right flight level of communication for, for the parents so that you don't overwhelm them, but yet you give them the information they need?
Exactly.
Okay.
I want to jump in and say that Mr. Delzer has kind of led a parent group forum, is that what it's called? Where he's gotten feedback and met with parents to get feedback on our reports and things. And those are, those are things that he found where like they were talking, it's the too, too wordy, right? Too much education jargon, those kinds of things. So, he's bringing that feedback back and we're hoping to make changes based on that parent feedback.
Yeah, and I think it's a great opportunity too, with, you know, having your child come into the program and, and instead of trying to maintain a A or maintain a B, you get to see a progression from, from that 2 to the 3 and actually see that progress because they don't necessarily know everything. That's why we have teachers, right? So, yeah, I, I like the program, I think it's, it's a great path.
Owen, did you have?
Yeah, thanks for all your work on this and the updates. And I think as an elementary parent, I think we're seeing this get rolled out already. And I think from what I've seen, it's, it's been really promising. And I like, Kelly, you were talking about that vertical integration. And we were kind of talking about this with the instructional coaches at the new school board orientation earlier. But are you also looking past the K-5 to, you know, think about what, how this will look when it gets to the middle school and the high school? And, and what those kind of, you've overcome learning curves and then there probably will be even steeper ones.
For FIED, yes, we have, I actually just talked to Brandy Hardy, who teaches 7th grade FIED. So, and she's talked to Michael, who teaches 6th grade. So, we have talked about that, that we need to now go from, for us anyway, because we've done the K-5. Now, we need to see what are we covering, what are they covering, do we have gaps? So, we've had that conversation for the FIED part of it. I know that will be coming down the road here. So, to answer your question for that part, yes, classrooms, I don't know.
There's been some meetings with, with representation from elementary, middle school, and high school. But that is definitely an area where we need to, kind of a next step that we need to take.
Any other questions from the board? Well, we, thank you very much for taking your time this evening to come and share all the work that you've been doing. And the board is very appreciative also of the long hours and years that you've put into this. So, thank you again.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have superintendent's report, Dr. Beck.
Thank you, you have my written report here. The item I'm probably going to spend the most amount of time on is in facility discussions. I had a great recommendation from Melissa to encapsulate. Sometimes, you know, we think about the changes that we've talked about and we think about it as, you know, point C to point D, when there's, there's really a long line of work that's gone into, that has led, historical context that has led to the decisions that are in front of us. And Melissa had a great idea that maybe we needed a primer of sorts. And I used the board memo number 112 as that resource, not just for the board, but also for the staff and for the community to, to look back to as a resource and say, well, what, what led to this? How did we get here? And so, I am going to go through some of this a little bit more than others, other areas. Because initially, this was intended to be, just what I said, a primer between how we got here. So, starting with the enrollment facilities task force to where we are right now in these options. But I also expanded that this morning, so if you haven't looked at that since this morning, I added another page or page plus based on common questions that I've heard or things that have been asked. And I thought this is, this is the, the right venue that we can be consistent. And so, you know, for community members or staff, I sent this, the initial draft out to staff. I'll have to do that again because I've added to it now. But I wanted this to be a place where a resource that not just board members, but community and staff can look to and say, like I said, how did we get here? You know, you know, what has led us to this and what have we done? Because we as a board understand and central office, we understand because we're living it every day. But when you're not living it every day and you're only hearing about something, or maybe this happened, I wanted this to be a one place, a one-stop shop, you know, that we could go to and say, okay, this is what we're doing as a district. This is what has led us here. So, with that in mind, I'm gonna go into board memo 112. I'm not going to talk a lot about the, the first half or so of this. I think it's important still, that it's not necessarily for the board, but for those listening in, that we do talk about it a little bit. Really, this started, or this conversation initially started with the enrollment facilities task force. So, we had, you know, two roles. You know, the first was to, well, analyze the data that we have. What did we have and, you know, what are we seeing in terms of enrollment trends? What have we seen since the early 2000s with enrollment? And, you know, what are some solutions-oriented pathways that we can look to? And so, the, that, that task force met for essentially the whole school year in 2223, from October to May. And they met six different times and that included 17 different people. And, you know, long story short, on the enrollment and facilities task force, we, our purpose was, you know, when we got through the data analytics and just looking at the data, we said, well, what are all the solutions that we could possibly think of? You know, some of them were good, some of them were bad, and some of them were really bad. But our intention was to not leave any rock unturned. Let's talk about any solution that exists. We can always discard it later, but let's talk about all the solutions. So, we had 16 different proposed solutions in that group. We whittled that down to five by consensus, and we eventually whittled that down to three. And in May of 2023, that task force brought forward three kind of overarching big solutions. And that was presented to this board in, we had some time to let, allow that to percolate a little bit, have some community conversations. And that came in November 23 to a board retreat. And we dug really deep into those three different solutions. And the direction that we got as central office administrators was to, to focus on the, the option that addressed our elementary facilities. Because we had a secondary solution, we kind of had a bridge solution, and we had an elementary solution. So, a bridge, an elementary, a secondary solution. The board had great discussion over one full retreat and said, our focus needs to be at the elementary level. That's where we feel like we have the most leverage to make some change. But they also said, but we're not ready to make any kinds of decisions yet, we need more data. And so, the board tasked us as, at central office with dry, you know, getting into that enrollment. Okay, so if it is an elementary issue, what are different options that we should be looking at? And so, the facilities committee took those, that recommendation. We built some options, we had a kind of a review process and built four different options. And those four options are represented in this, on page 2. And I'm just gonna touch on them briefly, but option 1, the status quo. That means remain at five elementary buildings with eight sections per grade with all of our existing staff. So, the status quo option. Option 2, thank you for Steve for coining this phrase, but option 2 is the tourniquet option. We shift from five elementary buildings to four. This is kind of a play off the bridge option that the enrollment facilities task force had. Well, we can shift from five elementary buildings to four and then decrease from eight sections to seven sections at each of our K through 5 grades. What's important to recognize about all of these options is they're trying to solve or not solve two different problems. One is what do we do with declining enrollment and the need for operational change? And then, on the other hand, how are we addressing the facility needs that are outstripping our ability to, to address them? So, working with two problems. So, if you look at option 1, it, it addresses none of those problems. It doesn't address declining enrollment and operational change, and it doesn't address your facility changes or the facility needs. If you look at the tourniquet option, there's a reason it's called the tourniquet option. It addresses the operational change, but it doesn't address those facility needs. So, we would still have, one half of our problem statement wouldn't be solved. If you look to option 3, that's new construction of a two-section building. That would mean retire a single-section building and a double-section building and build a new two-section building. So, again, we would have that operational change. So, this actually addresses both problems. Addresses declining enrollment and operational change, and it addresses facility needs to some degree. Option 4, you know, I would call that our efficiency construction option. That's looking at, well, what if we didn't have any single-section buildings? So, we retired two single-section buildings and a double-section building and built a three-section building. What would that look like and how would that work? So, that would be our option 4. Again, that addresses operational change or operational needs, and it addresses facility needs. So, in option 3 and option 4, they, they solve both of those problems in our problem statement. One of the questions that I've had is, well, what does that mean? We say single-section building, you say multi-section building. Who, what, what's the timing, what's the pacing for that? And so, I, in, in this document, I did outline what that meant in very, very clear terms. Now, while the board has addressed this in the past and we've said it at different times, I want to be very clear that when we're talking a single-section building, we are, in, in options 2, 3, and 4, we are discussing Washington Elementary. And we are looking at Lincoln Elementary as a multi-section building in options 3 and 4. When we're looking at option 4, we only have two single-section buildings. So, that would mean Washington and Louis Lamore are all encapsulated there. So, the timing of those also is, is discussed in these options. So, in option 2, retire Washington Elementary, redraw boundary lines, move students across K-5 into appropriate boundary schools. So, that's kind of the, the pacing of what would happen in 2. In 3, retire Washington Elementary, redraw those lines, move students, build a new two-section building on the Washington campus. And when that's complete, you move Lincoln staff and Lincoln students to this new facility and then retire Lincoln Elementary. So, the pacing for option 4 works the same. Retire Washington Elementary, redraw boundary lines, move students, build a new three-section building on Washington campus. And then, when complete, move Lincoln and Louis staff and students to this new facility, retire Lincoln and Louis Elementary. So, that's the pacing. So, I hope that makes that process a little bit clearer. But one of the things that we knew and we learned from past referendums, we want to really make sure that we are engaging with the community to ensure that any discussion that we're having about facilities aligns with what our community needs are and expectations are. So, the board again said, well, we had this great enrollment facilities task force and they served a certain purpose, but we need a new group that's going to serve and expand that purpose a little bit more. And so, we created the Community Committee on Facilities, again, a representative group of community members, parents, teachers, administrators, school board members. And they're looking at those, all of that work that's been done before and then also making some recommendations based on those four options that we see. So, that work is current, that work is ongoing. The other thing that I think Melissa, that Melissa suggested to me that I thought was really a great idea and I wish I had thought of doing it before, is the next section, which is the timeline of activities. So, from fall 2020, now a lot of work was done before fall 2020 in facilities. But we're talking about this narrow band, this purpose. We're looking through the fall of 2020 all the way through until November 24. But then also, what are some future proposed activities that we are looking to do between now and the end of this school year? And I think it gives a sense of all the steps that have happened and all the steps that we still need to take to help us understand when a decision is going to be made, how it's going to be made, and what how it's going to be made, and what that impact is going to be to people. So I'm just going to pause before I get into conditions and process to see if there's any questions.
Any questions from the board at this point? All right.
Okay. So the next section is what I added today that I wanted to go through. And you've had some questions and a lot of attention drawn understandably to discussions about facility changes and operational changes. That creates a lot of questions at which I appreciate. I'm glad that people are reaching out and asking questions they should be. And one of the things that I recognize that we haven't talked a lot about in recent time is, you know, our initial facilities plan that was drafted in 2016 by the DLR Group. DLR Group was our architectural firm that was hired back in 2015. And in 2016, they brought a number of engineers in across multiple disciplines. They looked through all of our facilities and created a facilities plan for us. And they, if you remember, at least those that were around, they scored and they rated us in a traditional grading. I guess I should have done standards based conversion, but they did a, well, they did kind of. But they have an overall rating and they gave our facilities grades. And if you remember that, our, our facilities did not perform very well. At the elementary level, if I remember correctly, Louis L'Amour was a C, Lincoln was a D. All of our other buildings were F grades at the elementary level. And what's that? I think it was a C. But, but beyond that facilities plan, we had another group of consultants and engineers come in, and that was through Consolidated Construction. That was a construction management firm that we also had hired. We wanted to ask, or we had hired them to do what we now call the Capital Projects Plan. That was initially drafted in collaboration with them. We wanted long-term planning. We wanted, rather than just going through this annual look at what, what do we need every year, a really narrow band, no real planning. That's what existed in, you know, 2014 in our district. We just did a very narrow look. What can we afford to do right now? What are our biggest needs? And there wasn't long-term planning. And so we engaged with Consolidated Construction to build this Capital Projects Plan with us. It has evolved and grown over time. We've used it as a living document to do a lot of different planning. It is, in my opinion, very advanced planning tools for our facilities. I don't know what I would do without it. I, I just, I simply wouldn't be informed. I think as a district, we wouldn't be informed about what our facility needs are. But they brought in their own engineers, they brought in a facility management consultant, and they helped us build that. So they use that facility plan, they brought in their own engineers to look at all of our buildings and make those assessments and draft this plan. I say all that because I believe our Capital Projects Plan is really well informed. We have a very good sense of what our buildings, the condition of our buildings, the needs of our buildings. And I, I can't reinforce that enough because I've, I've heard things that like, you know, but are our buildings safe if we're making these change? We wouldn't, none of these four options would be options if facilities weren't safe. That is a, that is an absolute expectation, non-starter, absolute. Our facilities are safe. And any change that we're talking about, there, even the, the buildings that we have targeted for retirement are safe. Those are structurally sound buildings. Do they have areas of need? They're aging. Sure they do. Some of our buildings are almost 100 years old. Some of our systems are 70 years old. Of course, they have areas that we're monitoring and ensuring every single year and making updates to. Of course they are, but that doesn't mean that they're not safe. And it doesn't mean that, that there are any levels of concern in any of the facilities that we choose. But this group, DLR Group and Consolidated Construction helped us make that assessment. Beyond that, though, in our Capital Projects Plans, one of the things that we built in, and this was Aaron Roberts' idea, is build in strategic priorities. So we talked about facility availability. So these are all ranked, the most important things. Strategic availability and preventative maintenance. Well, that's obviously number one. That's our biggest need. We need to make sure that the buildings are safe, that we can keep the doors open and that kids can come. That is obviously ranked facility, ranked priority number one. Two, facility safety quality. Three, our third priority, facility and district efficiencies. Fourth, one, technology and expanded capability. And then we, of course, have design and risk contingency too. But that's all built into a rolling 10-year plan for facility needs. And I know that the board has seen that. If any members of our public want to see it, just send me an email. I'm happy to send you what those are. But every one of those activities is color coded into those strategic priorities. So we know how much money we have spent and are planning to spend in each of those categories. And I can tell you, over the next five years, the vast majority, we're talking 95-plus percent, is all focused on facility availability, preventative maintenance. We are front loading all of that, and that's where we are at. And I, and sometimes when we look at our big facility needs, we say, well, what have you been doing with the money that you have? I thought you, we levied building fund for this type of thing. Of course we do. And like I outlined in the memo, in the last five years, $13.4 million. That's how much money has been spent on facility needs in the, just in the last five years. $13.4 million. Now, that's inclusive of, of one-time special funds, but all money that the building fund has allocated and expended to facility maintenance. That's a significant amount of capital that is being spent to address facility needs. We are absolutely allocated and expending that money to appropriate priorities. But the reality is, and that's why we have a Capital Projects Plan, it tells us, we don't have the capital through our building fund to address all of those needs at one time. We have about $3 million in needs every year and about $1 million to spend. So there's a 2.2, about a $2.2 million gap that we have to address every year. That doesn't mean that we haven't allocated appropriately. It means that the needs are greater than what we have. I included a chart here. If you go down to the bottom of page five, that outlines when our facilities were built and what the usable capacity or the capacity is based on their usable, unusable classrooms. You know, we have, we have elementary buildings that are between 16 and 95 years old. Those have, there's an age to life, there's a system life that's usable in every system. You can keep fixing an HVAC system, keep fixing a boiler at a certain plate, point, those things need to be replaced. You can keep patching a roof, but at a certain point, that roof needs to be replaced. That's what we're running into. We've had a long, very efficient history here of fixing, and that's served the district well for a very long time. But the problem is, is they've reached the end of their useful life. That, and again, I can't say this enough, that we, that does not mean that we have not appropriated funds well. $13.4 million in five years. I think that's, that's a, a large amount of dollars appropriate to the financial needs. So that then begs the question, well, how do we make that decision? So if we have $3.2 million in needs and $1 million to spend, how do we make that decision? Well, it starts with the Capital Projects Plan. That's why we have devoted the resources to create the Capital Projects Plan and maintain it. But it's more than just, okay, well, it's next year. Let's move it over, and everything we planned for next year is going to happen. We have a pretty defined process to how we do that as well. We start with the Capital Projects Plan, but we have a protocol that goes to each of our building principals to say, well, here's what's listed in your Capital Projects Plan. So look at these priorities. Are these needs that you're seeing, are, this is, it's projected in this year. Is it a bigger prior, is this a bigger priority than what we see? And that allows them to give us feedback specifically on the Capital Projects Plan. But beyond that, we also ask them, are there new things? Are there other things that weren't recognized in this Capital Projects Plan that we need to be considering? And so they have that opportunity. So Capital Projects Plan leads to building principal protocols where they review those needs, give us new needs. We take that in central office. Christie and I, along with Jerome, who's our facilities director, we meet together and we prioritize all of those needs. So we look to every building, five elementaries, middle school, high school, transition program, CTC center, and we look to all of those and say, what's the biggest priority? So that's how we have to start that conversation. We get all of that feedback individually. We collaborate together and have a conversation about, well, what are the priorities? What is our funding? How can we make that work? That then goes to our facilities committee, who has the same conversation. They look to the recommendations that we make and say, here's what our budget looks like in our Capital Projects Plan. Does this align with what you see as a need? And we talk about those things in a facilities committee. And then it comes to the full board. There's a lot of steps that happen here to make sure that the priorities that we're selecting align with what our needs are. There's an awful lot of eyes on those priorities before we make a final decision by the full board through the Capital Projects, and that typically happens in April. I'd love to say we have the budget to support every one of those needs every year. I'd love to not have to pick and prioritize, but the reality is we do. We have to make priorities. We don't have the dollars available to address all of those needs every year. And, you know, I want to come back a little bit, you know, before I close on this. And just, I, I do, I get concerned when we talk, when we don't talk in facts and we, and we talk in assumptions or rhetoric. I get concerned about those things. That's one of the reasons why this is so important. I want to be able to draw back to what we have for facts. Facts in our process, facts in numbers, that's what we're dealing with. And it is not helpful, and I think it's dangerous, when we deal in rhetoric and we deal in assumptions. That's problematic. We're trying to make a decision that is best for the community of Jamestown and our school district. It is not helpful to deal in rhetoric when we have facts. And so my hope is that this can answer a lot of those questions and to help us move forward in this process. So with that, I would stand for questions on this memo.
Any questions on the memo Dr. Luck provided and shared? Erin?
Yeah, so in our last community, community meeting, one of the points that came out was, you know, just basic communication. A lot of reference was made to the newspaper article that came out, and then, big surprise. Well, you know, we've been working on this for a couple of years, and it was just decided at, at one point to write about it. But the information has been out there for quite some time in the, in this process that you, you talked about. So that just begged the question then, is, is there a, a communication that maybe the board needs to consider to, you know, be more effective as a, you know, instead of long-winded, or not necessarily long-winded, but, and, okay, and exciting school board meetings, you know? You know, a couple hours, people don't want to sit around and listen to us, you know, pass consent agendas. So is there a better, since this is such an important topic, is there something that we need to do as a board to help communicate this better? And I know coming up is, you know, the survey. And that our last meeting was, okay, what is the, what is the content of that need to be and to, to be effective in that communication? And we talked about how we can put some graphs together and, and different things to simplify the message, simplify the issues, and then help people understand what this looks like. Because there's, there's a lot of moving parts, a lot of details that get people bogged down. And then it's hard to follow if you're not involved with it every day. So I think that's a, an important factor in helping the community understand what it is that we're facing here. So I think, again, that's just a, something that we should definitely need to focus on, is that simple communication. And I think just, you know, back to the whole process of the Capital Projects Plan, I think where, where we're at with that is we've been making it look easy. Because we have a robust plan, because we know what's in front of us, it's informed, and we are able to prioritize. And we're not having to bring a lot of stuff to the public attention, asking for help. Oh, we need some more money to maintain this building or do this project. It's, we've made it look easy because we have that plan. But then what that plan is also telling us is that we have a problem that we got to solve. And we have some time to do it, but there is some urgency to it. So I think that's a key point to the message as well.
I, I can't agree anymore about than what you said on either of those points, but in particular the survey. I think the survey is, is partially designed, and I've seen some examples that the, the company that, the school perceptions that you'll act on later has provided. And they've really done a nice job of, of consolidating the message and recognizing the audience, and then getting some very specific feedback on different components or different ideas or different options. And I think that is a really important step to inform the board on what component, what is connecting with the community and what isn't. And I think that's going to serve a really important role. And that later on in the agenda will be a recommendation for me to approve that expenditure.
I'm just going to jump in on this conversation. I do want to just do a shout out to the Jamestown Sun. I do appreciate the coverage that they did. They did a nice article also back in, I think, late August where they, it was front page interviewed Dr. Luck. I think, Aaron, you were interviewed on it as part of the facilities committee. And so I do appreciate their keeping the community informed also. So I do appreciate the, the work that they've done as well. So, go ahead. Steve, you had a question?
I think if, if people are willing to dig into this information, they'll recognize the, just the wealth of information that we have already available. And just speaking about our, our Capital Projects Plan and talking about the $13 million that we've spent in the last couple of years, I think people will, if they are willing to look at this, they're going to be very thankful that we've had guidance, I guess, on how to, we've had an influx of money that we didn't expect, and we were able to spend it wisely, and I think they'll recognize that if they're willing to dig into it.
Thank you, Steve. Jason and then Owen. Owen, Owen, you were first? Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to kind of echo what Aaron was talking about and even what Steve was touching on of this idea of, I think, this is great, really good information, and, but it is, it's long form, right? So a six-page, single-spaced memo to me is more of a thesis. And I think, but, but we need that information out there. At the same time, I think in the spirit of transparency, it's out there. But at the same time, I think we need to not be defensive when asked for follow-ups or asked for information in different formats. And I think that's going to be key to keeping the community engaged and, and getting the buy-in that we're looking for.
Jason?
I see the, we're expecting the enrollment and boundary study here in December or next month. Is that correct? How soon after that will we be able to communicate the student, you know, where students will be going, staff will be going?
Yeah, I think you'd still want to, you would still want to have the board determine the option. You know, because that's going to inform everything, option four versus option two or three. You know, that's going to look different, so we wouldn't want to, you, you wouldn't be able to make that communication until those decisions have been made. So, so really the, the leverage point is, is the board's decision on options.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Melissa?
Not really a question, just more of a comment that I appreciate you taking the time to, to do this. And I, I know, even though it is a, a six-page document, I think, considering the amount of questions and the amount of people saying that this was something that we're just, a big surprise, where's this coming from? I think it's very necessary with our public that they need to see all the steps that it took to get to this point and also see what steps are going to be continuing so that they understand every, everything that, and that we, we need to be very, very transparent in what has happened, what is going to be happening, and what we are continuing to do. I, I realize six pages is a lot, but it's been a lot. It's, it's taken a lot to get, to get to this, and it's going to take even more. And so I appreciate you taking the time to do that. And hopefully, the public, if they don't have access to being able to see this, can contact the district office and get a copy.
Absolutely. Be easy, and to that point, I agree, it's a lot, and I also agree, and I also agree it's necessary, but I also agree that narrowing the message to the audience is going to be an important next step, too. So how can we, how can we take that volume of information, make it more digestible, and reference the, the more information that can be found other places? But I do think this is a really important place to start. And if anybody wants to dig and ask me questions, I'm available, 252-1950. I am happy, as you might imagine, to talk about this to anybody, so. I'm just going to move on to my report?
Yep.
Okay. More of the report. One of the questions I thought was really interesting that came from the Community Committee related to waivers, and I did a waiver analysis in, in what seemed like a simple question, how many students have, are waving into buildings? It actually was a more complicated question than, because what I consider a waiver in central office, you know, is different than what other people might consider a waiver. So this actually became kind of a really in-depth analysis of waivers in our district. And so I can, I provided that, you know, the waiver analysis link, you can look, it's, it's a spreadsheet, because I love my spreadsheets. But, but beyond that, I'll talk about some takeaways, but I also had to categorize all of these different waivers, you know? If we just say, well, we have X number of waivers, that, you know, that might say, well, whoa, that's a lot of waivers. But I had to categorize them, because they're, they all have different purposes, and they're defined a little bit differently. And so I, I categorized them and defined them as a legacy waiver, the family moved and they want to remain at the same school, we would ask them for a waiver for that. That's why I said it's not, you know, what you might consider a waiver is different than what I consider a waiver. District placements, so legacy waiver, I'm going to define all these. So what I call a legacy waiver, when we make a, an approval for a family to wave in, we are making an approval for all of their kids to wave into that same building. Because we don't, our intention isn't to split families. We wouldn't say, well, you can go to Roosevelt because you want to, but your kindergartner coming next year? When your son is a first grader, your daughter kindergarten that's coming? She's going to go to Washington because we don't have space. We, when we consider waivers, you know, that's what I'm considering, that legacy waiver, and that's actually the biggest group of waivers that we have. There is a long-term impact that comes from the allowance or permissive waivers, and so I, I think that's an important definition. A family moved and wants to remain at the same school, a district placement, that might be a medical issue, might be EL, might be balancing caseloads for special education, those types of things with a district placement. And just for the note, if we district place, we bus for free, because that's our, that's our give and take there. Place, a family's placed or moved, and they want their neighborhood school. So oftentimes, what we see is when a student is placed, or they start in a school, they want to stay there. So even though they move across town, they want to stay at Lincoln because that's what they're familiar with. Or if they were placed there, they often want to stay. And then the last, oh, then we had staff members. One of the benefits that we provide to a staff member is if they have a child, and they work in, say, Washington, they have a child, we allow them, if they want to, to wave their child there. And that's just a one small benefit we can provide our staff. And the last one is what I think people believe or, or define a waiver as, and that is, they have a particular preference, you know? But that's actually the smallest number of waivers, if you look at the spreadsheet. That's a very small amount of the waivers. I would say eighty-five, eighty to ninety percent of those are denied every year. We don't, we don't act on preference. We, we focus first on boundaries, and then we look at the reasons why. We don't approve for items of convenience. We would only do that in an instance in, in where we're having disparate class size levels. We don't want to have a kindergarten with 22 kids in one school and 11 in the other. That doesn't help us manage the needs of our, of our teachers. So there are times in which we do approve those. So my primary takeaways of the analysis, interestingly, I knew that this wasn't the case, because I work in these every day, but there is a pervasive misnomer in our district that there are, that that is a huge impact into our elementary enrollments, that we see significant impacts to some buildings versus others, where, have a mass exodus in some buildings and a mass increases in another. And this analysis was helpful to see that isn't really the case. There are some increases, but they're, they're pretty manageable differences between buildings. The biggest difference that we saw actually was it, was what I consider our legacy waivers at Lincoln. We had a large number of those that kind of pushed that difference a little bit more at Lincoln Elementary, but really, they're fairly evenly represented across all categories. There's just a little bit of swing in between those. There is a long-term impact that we need to consider if we want to continue, when we make decisions, whatever facility decisions we make, operational changes that we make, we need to have a real conversation about waivers. Because if we allow them, we have to understand that there's a legacy impact that's pretty significant, and then we'd have to plan around what that looks like. But regardless of what long-term decision we make, I would like to see us continue that opportunity for staff. It's a pretty small number, pretty limited impact, and it's a benefit to our staff that I would want to continue. I shared a little bit of information in my report related to a new program that we're eligible for, Title III immigrant funding, so there's a baseline funding there. It's really, we're eligible for it because of the large number of immigrant families that we've seen into Jamestown Public Schools. I shared a, I'd updated our negotiations timeline, that's Board Memo 113. We'll, we'll do the work on that, just wanted to make you aware of what that, what that timeline looks like, and just as a reminder of all the steps that we need to take to be in compliance with Centricode related to negotiations. I also shared this with the administrators and the Education Association, so we're all on the same page. I shared a little bit of information about our 360 feedback loops, something in the last 12 years that we've continued to do. Every year, I've given you our two examples, our 21st Century Administrator, or ELP, or Education Leadership Profile. We collect that data from all of our, from all of our staff, at least we make that available. They do that anonymously. All of that feeds into those reporting templates that I provided, they've given you an example, and then after that, we build goals. I, I meet with each of those building administrators, and we build goals based on what that says. I think our principals do a great job of, of modeling continuous improvement in this step. They get great feedback from our teachers and our staff, very appreciative of that, and they are, too, and then they build goals around that. That's, I think, why we, we see that growth in our administrators, that's part of what this is. I think it's a great process. I've shared the EAP, our Employee Assistance Program Utilization Report, just sharing it for awareness. I would always love to see that used more. We've tried a lot of different strategies on how we can ensure people use that more. We just haven't found the right messaging yet to get more people using the EAP. But in my mind, if, as long as one person is using it and sees value, it's something I want to continue to do, but I, I would like to see that grow. If you drive by JV CTC, you'll see a, a bench there, a blue bench. That is a memorial for Paul Martin. Paul was a, was killed in action as a law enforcement officer in Mercer County, you might have remembered that about a year ago. And he's a JHS graduate, I think it was 1988 or 1989 he graduated, and his dad, Fred, worked for JV CTC, so we felt it was a pretty appropriate memorial to provide to him. So if you see that blue bench as you drive by JV CTC, that is, that is in honor of Paul Martin. We had a really nice memorial for him when that dedication was made. A lot of work from Darby Heinert and Heidi Eckert to make that work, and appreciative of that. I've provided you with the open enrollment tuition agreement Board Memo. I've recycled this memo a few different times, just gives you a primer on why people are eligible, what's the Centricode behind, why they make the choices, or what they have the ability, the choices they are able to make in terms of tuition agreements and open enrollments. We have a couple of course approvals, and earlier this meeting, you had a chance to recognize Brandy Hardy. She is my spotlight this meeting. I think she exemplifies the dedication effort and program building necessary to be at the highest level in extracurricular activities. You know, we recognized her for WDA Coach of the Year and State Coach of the Year. She's actually done that two years in a row. That's really hard to do, to have somebody that achieves at that level, two years in a row, I, I think, really outstanding. She's really fostered a great culture in the program, and I'm just very proud of her, and I wanted to recognize her for the work that she's done. So with that, I would stand for other questions.
Any other questions from the board, in the remainder of the report? Okay? If not, moving on. Nothing under old business, under new business, we have nothing under activities. Under buildings and grounds, we have A, approval of the agreement to provide a community survey. Is there a motion? Motion by Erin. Second by Steve. We have a motion, a second for approval of agreement to provide a community survey. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Curriculum assessment instruction. A, approval of course proposals to JV CTC. Does the board mind if we do this all in one, or would you like to remove one? Erin? One, okay. Number one, commercial driver's license, CDL. Two, culinary arts one. Three, culinary arts two. Is there a motion? Motion by Erin. Second by Jamie. We have a motion, a second for approval of course proposals to JV CTC, commercial driver's license, CDL, culinary arts one, culinary arts two. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye? You got a question? Sorry about that. Yep, go ahead, Melissa. We'll, we'll re-vote the ayes. Go ahead.
I just had a question for, for clarification purposes. On the CDL, it said that we would then need to purchase a, the district would need to purchase a vehicle to be used for that. Is, are we going to actually have to purchase that, or is there some, somebody that we can use in the community that we could use? I mean, like, there are several places in, in town that have charter buses, semis, can we use those as opposed to purchasing?
Probably looking at a simulator for that, just so, you know, to burn out the clutch.
Yeah, so that's, that's exactly what the, the state director told us when we had that conversation. You start with the simulator, because, you know, you don't want to lease something from somebody and return it without a transmission.
That's true.
That's true, yeah. Good learning for everybody, but that would be the goal. And then there have been, historically, there've been some state funds similar to the RWP program from Department of Commerce that have supported career tech centers, and then you open up that opportunity to, you know, community education as well, adult education programs, so.
I think there's some real opportunities with CDL in particular to align with community needs and the adult education pieces that we haven't done as much in the last, you know, 20 years at the CTC, that I think really could come, come back.
Thank you, Dr. Luck and Mr. Gaylor. Jason?
I may have asked this in previous proposals. What are we looking at for minimum requirement of enrollments? And it might depend on class, because it's CTE, but you know, these are all depend, you know, pending enrollment and staffing, and it's probably not just a one number answer, but what do we generally look for, for a number of students to offer the course?
So there's a maximum number for CTE classes, and that's always based on lab equipment and safety. And so when we've looked at minimum for any of our classes, we've always tried to make sure that, you know, we're providing the opportunity. If we can't provide it one year, we're providing it every other year. We're not talking about adding this class with a full-time instructor. So culinary arts would be a part-time instructor. Potentially, if the board approves these proposals, that would be a proposal we would bring next. What are we guessing in terms of student numbers? So I think, you know, you'd need a minimum number, probably, for CDL would be something like five, for culinary arts, it might be closer to 12. One of the generous things that I think that the legislature and Department of Career Tech Ed did in the last biennium was they said, any new or expanding CTE program is reimbursed at 75% of the cost, which makes it much more affordable for us to start new programs and be able to get our feet under us. And so that enrollment tends to build itself, just like we saw aviation, you know, five years ago, started out with, with a dozen kids, you know, now to, we're past max capacity in those.
Okay. Hold on, Mr. Gaylor. Steve, go ahead.
Is that CDL course going to be available for adult ed as well? I'm just, just curious, the CDL requirements have changed a lot in the last couple of years, and the cost and the requirement has gotten significantly higher?
Yeah, and some, part of the conversation started with Dietrich or Harlow's, and just trying to figure out, you know, what are they using? They're using some online curriculum and then doing some in-house training for that, for the hours and that kind of thing. And I think that there was some interest there as well, with, you know, what could this look like? So we just have to figure out who's the, is the instructor and the staffing. But assuming that we're only offering one block of CDL, that opens up even daytime opportunities for adult learning. We haven't, as Dr. Luck said, we haven't done as much with that, you know, in the 90s, some of you probably are very familiar with a lot of the school-to-work and adult learning opportunities that happened at career tech centers, and that's a desire of our state CTE department to try to expand those opportunities, too. We just have to figure out, how do you make it cash flow? Who are the right partners in adult learning?
Any other questions?
The other comment I was going to make about this is, you have to think about scheduling, too. This might be an every-other-year offering if there aren't, if there isn't significant interest, or, or if you're trying to build the program, some of these might not be offered every year, a CDL might be on even years, for example, something like that. So we have ways to make it work, but I do appreciate what Adam is saying as well, with the, with the new program, and, you know, it's much easier to consider implementing a, a new program when the costs of 75% are reimbursed.
Any other questions from the board? Okay. Sorry, Melissa, I didn't see you waving over there, so, wave, wave bigger. I will, let's do this one again here. Approval of course proposals for JV CTC. Number one, commercial driver's license, CDL. Number two, culinary arts one. Number three, culinary arts two. All in, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Number four, finance. We have general fund balance and monthly financials there for your information. Does anyone have any questions for Kristy at this time? Okay. If not, moving on. Nothing under operations, under personnel. A, negotiations timeline is also there for your information, so please review that. And B, approval of the resignation at the conclusion of the 2024 to 2025 school year contract. Number one, Sherri Schmidt. Number two, Mark Stillwell. Number three, Mary Stillwell. Number three, Darla Hoag. Number, oh, number three? One, two, three, Mary Stillwell. Four, Darla Hoag. Five, Lenny Steinmetz. Six, Allison Best. Is there a motion? A motion by Melissa. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jason. We have a motion, a second for approval of resignation at the conclusion of the 2024, 2025 school year. Sherri Schmidt, Mark Stillwell, Mary Stillwell, Darla Hoag, Lenny Steinmetz, and Allison Best. Any discussion? Yes. Jamie?
I just wanted to thank all these educators. They have been an absolute credit to our district, and I appreciate all, all the passion they've shown our families and children over the years.
Yes, thank you, Jamie. Yes, lots of years of service, if you start adding these up here, so we do very much appreciate their service. Any other discussion? If not, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. C, approval of non-renewal of, and this is just extended contracts, I just want to make that clear, for the first semester 2024 to 2025 school year. JHS, Colton Alteringer, Jason Carroll, Kim Carpenter, Reagan Selaya, Andrew Fitzgerald, Lynn Kozel, Lay Meyer, Cody Mickelson, Shelley Moulson, Cassandra Redburn, Tim Rainham, Carla Rosario, Denise Toome, Denise Wood, and Zeb Willer. Is there a motion? Motion by Jamie?
Second.
Second by Owen. We have a motion, a second for approval of non-renewal of extended contracts for the first semester 2024 to 2025 school year. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Yes.
If I may, we get a question every year about this. We are talking extended contracts, not any individual people here, just the extended contracts. Just want to reinforce that. I know you said it, but we get, we do get questions.
Yep, for this list, yes. And D, approval of extended contracts for second semester for the 2024 to 2025 school year. JHS, Kim Carpenter, Cody Mickelson, Shelley Moulson, Denise Wood, Colton Alteringer, Jason Carroll, Cassandra Redburn, Reagan Selaya, Lynn Kozel, Tim Rainham, Carla Rosario. Reagan Selaya, Lynn Kozel, Tim Rainham, Carla Rosario, Denise Toome, and Zeb Willer. Is there a motion? Motion by Steve. Second by Melissa. We have a motion, a second for approval of extended contracts for second semester of the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five school year. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion approved. E, approval to hire on January second, twenty twenty-five for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five school year. Morgan, is it here? Here, here? Yes, and who's it?
Preston Myers.
Preston? Oh, yeah, Preston Myers, Morgan Bossingham, Trevor Wilson, and Jacob Burkhardt. Sorry, there's a few updates here, since, so there should be five of them. Is there a motion? Motion by Melissa? Second by Jason. We have a motion, a second to approve one through five to hire on January second, twenty twenty-five for the twenty-four, twenty-four to twenty twenty-five school year. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye, and opposed, same sign. Motion approved, and welcome to our district. Policy and procedures, number seven. A, approval of amended policies and regulations. Do we want to do all these together, or do you want to pull any of these out? Yep, sure can. Want to do those first? Okay, so we will approve of amended policies, regulations, DDAE parental leave and DDAE-dash AR parental leave regulations. Is there a motion? Is there a second? We have a motion, a second to table DDAE parental leave and DDAE-dash AR parental leave regulation. Okay, and that's all we need, right? Do we have to vote on that? I don't remember. Yep, so, okay, so we'll have to vote. Thank you for the help on Robert's rules here. So we'll have to vote on that. Christie, you'll have to do a roll call for that then. So the motion is to table this until our next meeting in January twentieth. Yes, if there's a motion, I think. Yep, yep, okay, we have some discussion. Is there a discussion on table? Okay, okay, yep, okay, discussion first. Erin?
So I'm just wondering why we want to table it.
I think last month, we brought up some that there are potential other options to discuss in terms of amending these parental leave policies. And that we were going to discuss those at the board retreat. Those haven't been discussed yet, so I thought it would be pragmatic to discuss those first before we act on amending these policies.
Any other discussion? So we will, we've, the policy, just for public's information, the policy increases parental leave from twenty to forty days.
Eight days, yep.
So it's an increase of, of twenty days for parental leave for that. So Christie, you want to do a roll call for, no, this is for, a vote yes means you're, it's a vote to table. Yes, yes, Melissa, yep, go ahead.
Do you have anybody who's waiting for this?
Oh, that's a good question. That's a good question.
No, it's a good question. My initial recommendation with this was that it would become effective on July first because it's in the middle of a contract year, we would have already had people take leave. So any change wouldn't be implemented until July first regardless. Yep, yep. Nobody would be impacted.
Yeah, that's a good, good question, Melissa. We're ready? Steve Velkam. Melissa Gleason. Owen McKenna. Jamie Bear. Heidi Larson.
No.
Jason Rohr. Jacob Meyer. And Erin Roberts. Six to two. Okay, all right, we will put that on our January agenda and it currently is on our agenda for our board retreat coming up January ninth. We have two other policies, FFF-dash AR one, school-sponsored trip rules, and FFF-dash AR two, travel study programs. Is there a motion? Motion by Jamie? Second by Steve. We have a motion, a second for FFF-dash AR one, school-sponsored trip rules, FFF-dash AR two, travel study programs. We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Any discussion? If not, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Approval of tuition agreements for the twenty twenty-four school year. Pre-K students to attend Medina Public School, A. B, seventh grade student to attend Montpelier Public School. C, fifth grade student to attend Yellowstone Public School. D, third and fourth grade Barnes County student to attend JPS. Is there a motion? Was that Erin or Jacob? Erin, motion by Erin. Second by Jamie. We have a motion, a second to approve A through D. Any discussion? Any discussion? If not, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion approved. Nine, other, approval of school board retreat on January ninth at five thirty PM at the James Valley Career and Technical Centers. This is in addition to our calendar. Is there a motion? Does that work? Oh. Do you have a question, Erin? Okay, okay. Motion by Erin, all right, thank you. Motion by Erin, is there, and second by Jacob. We have a motion, a second for approval of school board retreat on January ninth at five thirty PM at the James Valley Career and Technical Center. Any discussion? Any discussion? Yep, Dr. Luck? Nope, okay. All right, and no discussion, assuming roll call vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. And motion approved. Any items for future agenda at this time? If not, just let Dr. Luck or myself know. Under meetings to be scheduled, we have the GD graduation on Thursday, December, so this is this Thursday, December eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, at six PM at the James Valley Career and Technical Center. Do we have any board members? Normally I attend this, but do we have any board members that would be willing to? I have, also have a graduate, another graduation I have to attend that night. Will you be able to go? Okay, thank you very much. And any others are welcome as well, but I would like the board to be represented there, so thank you, Jamie. School board retreat on Thursday, January ninth, twenty twenty-five, at five thirty PM in the conference room of the James Valley Career and Technical Center. Health insurance committee meeting on Monday, January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, at three forty-five PM in the district office conference room. School board meeting on Monday, January twentieth, twenty twenty-five, at five thirty PM in the Thompson Community Room at the Middle School. North Dakota School Board Association Negotiation Seminar on February sixth and seventh in Bismarck. Are we missing any other, other committees? I don't think there's any finance or facilities. Are we good? Nothing else? Okay. Yep, we'll get that. We're clarifying it right now. Yeah, there, we'll clarify that in just a moment. Meanwhile, your monthly, it's, it's on Wednesday? It's on Wedn, it's on Wednesday? Are you still able to, you're not able to, okay. Can everyone else check their calendars? And if you're able to make it on Wednesday? Was this Wednesday? Yeah. You're, Jason, you're able to go? Okay, thank you, Jason. I appreciate that, thank you. It's a CTC center, yep. Okay, the monthly superintendent evaluation is Section One, Goal and Vision, and Section Three, Human Resource Management. There being no further business before the board, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.